This time will take one to say all the laws. We're really into it. I'm glad to be here today, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Certainly remember, Ms. Brenda's husband, he's going to be having pacemakers. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you again for another day of life that you've given us, dear Lord. We thank you for the freedom and the liberty to have such a meeting as a school board meeting open to the public, dear Lord. We thank you for all those in attendance. Just, dear Lord, a special thank you and a special blessing upon all of the Special Olympics athletes that are here today to receive much well-deserved recognition, dear Lord. We just thank you for them and what they mean to our community, dear Lord. We're thankful for the hospital and their expansion ceremony that they've just had today, dear Lord, and bless them as they continue through that project. Dear Lord, as the January, June 30th comes to a close, dear Lord, as the official close of the school year, we thank you for your many blessings that you've provided for us. We thank you for your protective hand upon the safety of our students and our employees, dear Lord, as the school year concludes, dear Lord. We ask for those same things as we begin the 25-26 school year, that we have a good school year, dear Lord, it's a safe school year. We all work together for that of the students, dear Lord. We ask you, most of all, we thank you most of all, dear Lord, for your son that died on the cross that gave us that promise of everlasting life. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
We'll call the meeting to order at this time. Roll call.
Roll call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Selby.
Present.
Ms. Wilson is absent on a family trip, but athlete, she did ask me to let you all know how much, how proud she is of you all, and she hates that she couldn't be here to be part of that recognition. Ms. Brenda Hickam-Botham?
Here.
Mr. Kazook?
Present.
Next item on the agenda.
With the meeting agenda provided for your review, no corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I make the motion to adjourn the agenda.
Second. Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Mr. George is absent. Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay, next item is the recognition of Russell County Special Olympics.
We are so proud of the members, certainly the sponsors and many parents and guardians, but most importantly, the members of the Russell County Special Olympics team here with us today. As you all have known, seen, heard the news, and you've seen part of that that's been around, they've had another great season. So two of the main sponsors, Miss Stephanie Coffey and Miss Heather Tool, who all have provided us like a highlight of year review. Yep.
We have been doing this since 2012, and we absolutely love it. We love our athletes, and we thank you all for taking time to recognize our athletes. This is a huge deal for them. They have their medals that they won this year, and what else?
They competed in Somerset Track Meet and then their state, and so this has rounded up. The track season's over, but we're so excited that they get one more opportunity to get recognized because we're so proud of all of them. We start practicing in March, and we practice weekly until right at the first weekend of June usually, so they've had a lot of hours of practicing. They work hard, they're really dedicated, they try hard.
They're good on the radio.
They're great on the radio.
Mr. Hoover had them on the radio. That was a great show.
We have to send in times. They're really strict on like disqualified if they cross the line, they're disqualified, they're really strict up there. So we have to practice all the ins and outs of.
A lot of expectations.
Yes, yes.
But they rise up to.
Oh, yes.
Oh.
So we have them all certificates. Do you want me to hand them out? Some of them, I know everybody couldn't make it. Okay. But we'll still call them names as we go across them. Board members, would you like them to go, maybe come through here and shake your own hand? And then, does that sound good, everybody? All right, so Mason Tucker, he was here this evening, or this afternoon, I'm used to evening, boys. Jordan Chuck?
He's not here.
Chase Rogers? Well, I'm not starting off today. Matthew Pinkett. There he is. Go through there, and they'll shake their hand. Congratulations, we're proud. Eastern Perkins?
Good.
Teresa Lopez?
Good job, buddy.
Jonathan Kits?
Jonathan.
All right, come on, Jonathan.
This is Jonathan's first year.
Oh.
Yeah. Jonathan, Mr. Portis, you're so good.
Congratulations, Jonathan. You want to come through here?
Shake your hands. Good job, Jonathan.
How's your own real?
Who's making, Ben's a teenager.
He has some original people, so Trey and Angie, Jesse, Matthew, they were here from the beginning, so 13 years.
All right, that's great. Angie and Angie.
Oh, Angie. Angie, Angie, Angie. She's a cheerleader, wherever one else she is.
There you go.
Thank you.
We just concluded revival services last night, but I feel like we're still in on that. Congratulations, Angie.
Thank you.
There you go. Just want to make your way through there and shake their hand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Dee Dee Graves?
Yeah, Dee Dee.
There it is, John. Congratulations. Will do her, shake their hand. Dee Dee?
Congratulations.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Allison Frost?
Congratulations.
Rebecca Anderson?
Good job.
Isabella Davis?
Sorry, there were some vacations planned.
My good friend, Jayden Naen.
Jayden.
Good friend, Jayden. Here you go, Jayden. Come through here and check your hands for her. Samuel Carter?
No.
Trey Brown?
Good job.
Thank you.
Check everybody else's hands. And Kaylee?
Kaylee.
Mr. Jesse Bray?
Good job.
As you walk through here, tell Mr. Hoover a song when he's playing.
No. Staff, you are my son.
And Mr. Bowden?
Why are you going to say?
Well, thank you. But we need to give Miss Stephanie and Miss Heather a big round of applause. Thank you. Jayden, I haven't even seen this.
You folks are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you're welcome to leave at this time.
Well, Ms. Heather was already standing up.
Well, I felt bad. I'm sorry, I wanted to go.
Thank you, Jayden.
We just wrapped it, we'll step back for a minute.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah.
Oh, that'd be great. Ms. Heather, did the maid, they hold their certificates and you all get a picture? Well, Ms. Carol get a picture if you all hold.
Glad you got to see me.
Oh, I didn't see you sit there. How are you, babe?
Thank you for being here.
No problem. I take care of her a couple days a week, so.
Oh, that's good. Yes. Behave.
You're easy, you're going crazy.
I heard you were.
That's nice.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. There are none, proceed. Consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes and payment of bills. If there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda. Of course, the budgets and all those types of, or the treasury report and stuff was given at the other regular meeting in June, so I recommend the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second. Derrick, he got it.
Second.
Mr. Selby made the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. George is absent?
Yes.
Ms. Brenda Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is property casualty insurance.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. So as we said at the last board meeting, had some information kind of at the last minute, so we put this off until the last minute of the fiscal year that we, Ms. Carnes, our insurance expires tomorrow. So just some notes, and then I'll just kind of go through some stuff. We have the renewal proposal from Liberty Mutual, it's a reduction from the initial proposal that they provided, it is now $583,800. Bluegrass Risk Management, $590,493, and I did note in their proposal or with their proposal includes their bylaws and the joint exercises of a power agreement to which Mr. Hoover has already reviewed for us. There's also a comparison document attached. I will note that that comparison document references the proposal with Liberty Mutual for the current school year. It doesn't note, that's not put together for the proposal, for the proposed year. This is where, this is where it's at for me as superintendent. I've spoken to a lot of superintendents, Bullock County, Mr. Superintendent Bacon, and Jesse Bacon and I were texting today about Bluegrass Risk Management. To me, the big deciding factor is between the level of coverage between the two entities. Let me just throw some things out, deductibles, $10,000 on current coverage to $5,000 on property, that's one example. If you're looking at crime, social engineering, funds transfer, really the cyber, the cyber policy, which is becoming more and more common every day, it's with Liberty Mutual, it's $100,000 coverage, with Bluegrass Risk Management, it's a million dollar coverage. Liability, excess liability, $2 million term limit, or total limit, $10 million total limit. You all have those. In the violent event response coverage, it's a million dollars versus $5 million. That's, Lord forbid if there was, as it says, a violent response, such as a school shooting or something of that nature. Property policy limits, $250 million, $500 million. There's just a lot of general liability, okay? $2 million or $5 million. That's the comparison difference for coverage between the two. We know Liberty Mutual, I'm just going to be frank in some of this, we know them longstanding company, ensures school districts, if they wanted to, across the whole United States, certainly have many school districts here in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Bluegrass Risk Management, today, I guess would be officially finishing up their first year of the, they started last year. To bring up a term that I think would be fair, there is part of a pool, in part of your handout there, there's the framework on one of those pages, I don't have it, pull it up right here, on the initial cost, or the initial parts that the pool covers, and then it kicks on up to, well, you all have that in your book, it kicks on up to the other entities that provide the coverage. In the bylaws, there is the, I'll call it the assessment formula, I don't know if there's a better term for that, or there might be regarding that, where in the instance, if there were a high number of claims, if there is, you know, much more greater than anybody anticipated, on how districts might be assessed up to that percentage given. I'm going to recommend Bluegrass Risk Management for the sheer level of coverage that the district can receive from them. If, you know, times are uncertain, certainly, is it, is it a risk to go with a new company? Perhaps, but they're looking at ensuring now 20% of the school districts in the Commonwealth of Kentucky with this coming up for the 25-26 school year. Nobody that I've talked to had anything negative to say. Nobody that I'm aware of that is with Bluegrass Risk Management currently is leaving Bluegrass Risk Management. They've all decided to stay with them. Superintendent Bacon, actually there in Bullock County, they changed in the middle of the year, they changed around that January mark. But it's the level of coverage that is so striking for me. We've had good service with Liberty Mutual, certainly we have, they've been good to pay claims. We are blessed compared to some other school districts and some of my superintendent friends as far as claims goes, we've not had those claims as some people have, but happy to talk more about it or, you know, look at that. It's a little bit different structure, and that's all in your board packet there, than certainly as Liberty Mutual is, as compared, but the one thing that I think that I'm willing to step out on a limb with a newer company is that level of coverage. They are a nonprofit, and actually, the first five school districts are, serve as the Board of Directors. Superintendent Richardson in Plaskett County is the president of the Board of Directors for that. So it is nonprofit, and they, they look at excess revenue, if you will, on how they may give that back to the districts. One thing they mentioned, we currently pay for vector solutions, several thousand dollars a year, that's one thing that they're looking at, would just be part of their product, if you will. That does all of our bloodborne pathogens, safe schools training, you know, while there's a litany of videos that we all have to watch every year, and that's a service that they provide. They do a lot of the same things as far as Liberty Mutual does, as far as coming down, making visits, site visits, you know, doing inspections and all those types of things, and give those reports back to us, which in turn, we hope to, you know, if there's an issue identified, then we hope to take measures to fix that. So if they identify a hazard, or if they identify that something needs to be fixed, so that we would do that, hopefully to mitigate a future claim or to maybe even prevent a So that's, that's going to be my recommendation, Bluegrass Risk Management for school year 2025-2026 for the property and casualty insurance coverage. I know we have representatives here from Liberty Mutual, Mr. Hill and Ms. Sharon, and again, appreciated all the work that they've done, and David here from Assured Partners, which is the carrier for Bluegrass Risk Management with that. Happy to talk about and discuss the pros and cons.
So you spoke to other school districts that is using the new company?
I have.
And they are well satisfied, or?
Everyone is staying with them and have no issues even with claims. I know Ms. Carnes has reached out to some of her counterparts, and they too have not had any issues. It's fair to say it's new, Mr. Selby, you know, we know that, it's, they're just concluding the year. It's been so good so far. Again, the, it's about $7,000 higher than Liberty Mutual, but looking at the coverage, if we were to have an event, we would pay that difference and more with a deductible. But yes, in short, to answer your question, no one has had anything negative to say.
Well, you have to have a year, one, three, never a year, Dave.
That's correct. And it's, I mean, it expires today, which both of them are ready for the proposal. They would just, whichever company the board ultimately goes with, it's in effect tomorrow. That's not an issue with either company, but with that. And Mr. Hoover on the spot, but he's reviewed all the bylaws and everything, there's no issues that he had with any of those.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson's absent?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is fiscal year 25 capital funds replacement.
This June board meeting is always a meeting that we do a lot of routine items that you all see here each year. This is typical, we move the capital funds, $1,541,535 is the amount that Ms. Carnes has worked up for fiscal year 25, and then that, those capital funds can be used for building repairs, maintenance, the purchase of, pay for the school buses, and as we noted at the previous board meeting, this is where the money will come from to pay for the BAND facility. It will not be out of that general fund, it will come out of this capital fund outlay request. So I recommend approval from the Board of Education for the use of capital funds in the amount of $1,541,535 for fiscal year 25, building repairs and maintenance, purchase of school buses, construction services, and property insurance.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson's absent?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And I just realized I missed number seven. Consent agenda.
No, we did that.
Did we?
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Everybody's mind?
I don't remember that.
Nope, you did.
I guess because Ms. Caron didn't speak.
That's probably it, yeah.
I looked over and saw her.
But that happened at the first meeting, because of the.
Because of that, I looked over and saw Barbara there, and I thought I forgot. Okay, next item on the agenda is fiscal year 26 pay dates.
So this, this item and the raise that you all just gave were probably two of the most important items for our employees. So this is pay dates for fiscal year 26, Ms. Carnes always reviews those. You'll see the notes, we always pay on the first and the 15th, and then it has to be adjusted if it falls on a holiday or a weekend and things like that. So I recommend the approval of fiscal year 26 pay dates as presented.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson's absent?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is contracts, memorandums of agreement.
Got the energy manager contract again, yearly that we joined, Sign Cell Independent and Lane County and Somerset Independent to share that cost, and then preventative maintenance agreement, fire alarm monitoring. We're going to, I'm asking you all to switch to Alpha, that would, they're doing other work in the district, they have a master state agreement that makes it really nice on area, and then they will provide all of the monitoring for our fire alarms, including the, well, the inspections and everything with the fire alarm systems. So you'll see that each, each location is identified, what they do, the fire alarm monitoring, the inspections, whether or not it's a wet or dry chemical, the suppression hoods in the kitchen, all those types of things, and have it with one entity for both the inspection and the monitoring with that company. I recommend approval of the contracts and or memorandum of agreements that have been approved by the board attorney.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson's absent?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, my phone was talking to you.
I didn't think it was me.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We get too crazy together here.
Now hit the button.
Next item is 2025 Russell County Schools Policies and Procedures Update, final reading.
Mrs. Danber, we've not had any changes, we've not got into weeds of anything else and made any changes regarding the policies and procedures that were presented at the June 16th School Board Meeting, so I recommend approval of, did you have anything else to add or anything, Mrs. Danber?
Okay.
Appreciate all your work on this. I recommend approval of the policy procedure updates for the Russell County Board of Education.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson's absent?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay, next item is executive session superintendent evaluation, KRS 61.8101K preliminary discussion.
KRS 61.8101K from its boards of education to go into executive session for preliminary discussion of superintendent Ford's annual evaluation, and then as I noted there, the superintendent summary is attached as a PDF file, you all have the evaluation standards that previously have been disseminated at last board meeting, and then hard copies. So in a nutshell, you can talk about me in private, but then you have to publicly disclose it when you get done. So I recommend we go into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.810 subsection 1K for preliminary discussion of superintendent Ford's evaluation.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
12:27.
12:27, that's exactly what I'm doing.
Same time.
Do you want one to say here or go there?
Probably just go there.
It is 12:41. Now make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Selby?
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson's absent?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is superintendent Ford's sumptuous evaluation.
So the sumptuous evaluation of the superintendent has to be presented in open meeting with the board, and then, of course, board chair, Mr. Kazook and I will sign off on that official form, and it becomes part of, part of the minutes.
Mr. Ford's evaluation, strategic leadership exemplary, instructional leadership exemplary, cultural leadership exemplary, human resource leadership exemplary, managerial leadership exemplary, collaborative leaders, leadership exemplary, influential leadership exemplary.
Well, I do want to thank the board for that strong vote of confidence, and I think I say something similar to this every year, but it's no less heartfelt, it is absolutely because of certainly your all's support, this community's support, and the awesome faculty and staff of administration of Russell County Schools. Oftentimes, and you all heard me say it, I don't think people really realize what goes on for our students as they drive by our schools. And, you know, here's just a small example, took a phone call this morning, talking to a grandma, our electric had been cut off, and why do we do it? Youth Service Centers are bringing it to action. And, you know, we, at the groundbreaking ceremony at the hospital, Representative Jamie Comer commented on our nice school facilities. Well, we wouldn't have those without the board and community's support, and I'm just, I'm honored, I'm finishing up today, makes my 27th year full-time, and again, as I said earlier, I appreciate the new contract the board has given me, wouldn't want to be anywhere else, and just thank you all for your vote of confidence. Wouldn't want to be anywhere else, and just thank you all for your vote of confidence.
Motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is personnel reports.
Kimberly Powell's hired James Elementary School kindergarten assistant. Amanda Retro, James Elementary School hired instructional assistant for special education. Sharon Gaskin, James Elementary School instructional assistant for special education. Daisy Pratt resigned as Russell County Middle School cheerleading coach. Brian Rumley resigned Russell County Middle School assistant baseball coach. Sarah Harden is hired as exceptional education teacher. Ms. Harden was with us before as an instructional assistant, went back to school, got her teaching degree, got another job in another county, and openly came up here, and now she's back, so we're more proud to have her. Ms. April Griffey, hired Russell County High School business and marketing teacher. Scott Boring hired as the head wrestling coach. Shannon Maston hired as assistant girls golf coach. Travis Miller hired assistant boys golf coach. Sarah Roy hired as assistant volleyball coach. Sophie Shear hired assistant volleyball coach. And Jamie Bryant hired assistant football coach.
Next item on the agenda is public comments.
I don't know how this goes. I'm Dennis Kaiser, the new instructor down in Integra ROTC. I don't know if that dug a hole for us, but we're gonna be hosting three competitions already this year. One for the rifle, one for the drones, and then one for orienteering. And we're in the process of working out for the orienteering, basically as where the individuals, I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but the cadets will go out, and they, they have a map of the area, and there's certain points that they've gotta attain, they, they gotta get to, and they got a certain amount of time they gotta do it. So, you know, we're also working with the State Park down there, we've got an individual down there, and so we're supposed to meet up on the fourteenth, but also I was talking to the individual that does the orienteering. He said possibly we need to look at doing the championship for Area Eight. And Area Eight is, it broke up into three regions, west, and central, and east, and together there's like a total of, I'm gonna say maybe thirty-six high schools. So there's an opportunity for them to be showing up toward that for the championships. Not all of them, just a certain ones that win in one of their regions. But that's my goal, is for us to start hosting more and more of these competitions. And kind of get the ROTC program out there, and our high school out there. So those are some of the things that MA One and SEF are working on, and trying to get the dates for it also for that.
I asked him, maybe he's working a lot this summer, and I asked Chief Kaiser, I said, well, they're in the renovated building, right? And I said, how's, or the air conditioner's doing okay? He said, they're doing fine. I've had to turn them up some because they've gotten too cold. So that's always good to hear, in a, in a new building, renovated building, and have a new system, and that they're working well, so that's good. And we appreciate, I, I know the, the time and the effort and the energy that you all are putting into the program, and I know, I know I can speak on behalf of the board. We certainly believe in the Gerald T C program. We're proud to have you on board, Chief. You and MA One have developed a good working relationship, and we expect good things out of the program.
There, there will be.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Make a motion when you adjourn.
Second.